Good evening. They call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exit and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn yourself most as silent. Thank you for your cooperation. We are going to start with additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Mr. Malasani?
Yeah, under additions, nine-nine. We have an extra classroom treasure report for November. Under personnel, nine-two. Excuse me. It was four, for under consent agenda, four-nine. And that's nine-two under personnel as approval of two additional substitutes.
Thank you. First on our agenda, consent agenda. Resolve as the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approve the consent agenda is listed one through 10. Ma'am, a motion, please.
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That is carried. Moving on to communications. Correspondence, Mr. Malasani?
Yeah, just a couple for you. You see the honor roll. We had 70% of our students are in the honor roll for the first 10 weeks through November. Compared to last year, it's a few points, a few percentage points lower. We were 77% last year. You see them for the various classes, six through 12. Also tomorrow, we have Senator Helmy joining us. She'll be here in the morning. Actually, the first hour, we'll be meeting with 20 superintendents from our region for our legislative agenda so that she can move rural schools work forward when she returns to Albany. And then for the next 45 minutes, from 11:00 to 11:45, Michelle, Mrs. Meyer, and Dr. Chanel put together an agenda where we'll have a slew of activities going on in the gymnasium. Senator Helmy will be in there seeing her kids in action. Our government class has prepared some questions for her to answer. Really a nice agenda that the ladies put together for her. And then also next week, Senator, excuse me, Assemblyman Holly will be joining us. So new this year for Calum and Monford, you only actually get two assembly persons. Assemblyman Holly, who's actually now takes Monford at the redistricting, and then Assemblywoman Bailey, which is replacing Assemblywoman Burns, that starts in January of 2025. So we have three people representing our school district. Dr. Chanel and I will meet with Assemblywoman Bailey in January at her office. She was unable to come, but Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Holly. So there it is.
We'll start with also points of pride under communications. Our National Honors Society hosted a Red Cross blood drive for our student and staff. Fifteen Raiders donated a total of 12 units. Our Spanish club was privileged to host a Hispanic flamenco ballet as part of their fall 2024 tour. And National Honors Society hosted their first annual turkey trap with all proceeds of the event being donated to local food pantries.
Mrs. Strub's eighth grade CTE class is learning about entrepreneurship and has partnered again this year with Pizza Land in Kelowna to learn more about how to create and run a business.
Last week, we were proud to, wait, hold, let me start again. Last week, we were proud to represent Calmom at the New York State Council on Leader and Student Activities, Annual State Leadership Conference. Student council members Juliana Scott, Ryan Murdock, Hannah Harmon, and Peyton Clement traveled to Lake Placid with our student council advisor, Mr. Trost, and teacher, Mrs. Hatch, for the two-night, three-day experience. The conference was hosted by the Crown Plaza and the Lake Placid Olympic Conference Center. This action-packed conference had our students attending breakout sessions, keynote speakers, and workshops. Our Raiders also presented on Camp Raider, sharing our success with this great annual event. And congratulations to senior Ryan Murdock, who received the 2024 Kelly Jeffords Outstanding Student Leader Award during the conference, a well-deserved award.
She's here, too.
It is with great pride that we recognize our Raiders and Rivals who received Fall 2024 LCAA in Section Five Season Honors. We are also proud of our five student athletes who attended the Section Five and Ryan's Leadership Conference on the FLCC campus, along with participants from 21 schools from all over the Section Five. Congratulations to our varsity fall sports teams that were named as NYSPHSAA Scholar Athlete Teams. We are so proud of this incredible achievement. Girls cross-country, soccer, volleyball, and game day cheer, and boys cross-country and soccer.
Second elementary musical, Finding Nemo Jr., was a resounding success. Thanks to the dedication of 53 students from grades three, four, and five, and countless volunteer hours, over three months of rehearsals, we were able to deliver two sold-out shows. We are incredibly proud of everyone involved in this amazing performance.
Last week, we hosted the Fall Page Turner Competition. Joining our Calmom competitors were students from St. Agnes, Livonia, and Avon. Our advisors, Mrs. Flint and Mrs. Harmon, prepared our students well, and they held a tight race. Our Raider teams finished third and fourth. Congratulations, students and coaches, on your first Page Turner competition of the year.
Last week, we celebrated students who exemplify our Raider Five values. Be kind, be safe, be accepting, be respectful, treat others the way you want to be treated. On Tuesday, we recognized students who were nominated by their teachers that consistently go up beyond at our first Raider Five celebration. We also celebrated the winners of our Raider Five poster contest, whose artwork will be displayed as a reminder of our values. It was wonderful to see students celebrating each other, too. Throughout the year, students demonstrating Raider Five expectations have been rewarded with wristbands and shout-outs on the announcements. We look forward to continuing finding the good things our students are doing and celebrating them throughout the year, as well as with another Raider Five celebration in the spring.
All right, and that is all for the points of pride. That was a double. Moving on to guests of the board. We do not formally have any, but I do see some seniors sitting in our audience. We would like, we'd like for our seniors to introduce themselves if they're comfortable. If you're not, there is no pressure. We have a couple that have already been here, but there's two new people. If you want to introduce yourselves, that'd be fantastic and sort of tell us what your plans may be. If you have plans, really, if you don't want to, you don't have to. I'm not going to force anybody to do that.
Plans for like next year, as you graduate, you're going to, you know, going to the workforce, college, trade school, wherever your plans are. So if you're not presented, if you like, this is the time to do it. If you're, if you don't like it, that's fine, too. You don't have to.
I'm Mackenzie Ford, and I want to go to college for graphic design.
Perfect. That's what we're looking for. Thank you, Mackenzie.
I'm Phoenix Barrett. I'm going to Alfred University for art design.
Oh, good. Fantastic. Thank you.
You guys are all good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Public forum, there's nobody on our public forum today. So we're going to go into superintendent's reports. Mr. Malasani?
Yes, so the board developed goals a couple of years ago, and one of the goals was to develop a more vibrant music arts and theater program. So Dr. Chanel, Mrs. Meyer will be presenting the work we're at right now and the direction moving forward. So we start off with the elementary, then we move to middle.
Sure.
Take it away.
Okay. Elementary update. Look at Peter. Okay, so we had the opportunity with the unfortunate events of COVID to actually receive some funding, and we used that funding at Mr. Nardone's, like, deadline to purchase some general music instruments. So if you recall, when we hired Mrs. Peterson to replace Mr. Toyama after 40-something years, she needed some new instruments. So we actually found some grant money and also budgeted to have our band instruments updated. It was certainly time to give our general music some of the same courtesy and updates. So we purchased quite a bit of new instruments to see in our general music class with our COVID funding. So it was a really great way to spend that money, and you'll see Mr. Bowman now utilizing it quite a bit. It was quite a feat to put those things together, but really nice quality, and I can see it lasting for quite a few years. So that's the new instruments. One thing that Mrs. Peterson has worked on, and she continues to do so, is at the end of every year, we do find ourselves needing to update and repair, clean, of course, the instruments that we do own for band. So we have students that definitely rent their own instrument, they take care of it themselves. However, we do have quite a few school-owned instruments to tend to. And the average cost is about $2,500. We wanted to stop feeling surprised by that at the end of the school year, so we've asked that Mrs. Peterson create kind of a repair schedule and also tell us the cleaning schedule for it, because as everything else, inflation happens and the cost has gone up every single year. So she created a beautiful spreadsheet that tracks all of our instruments and when they're due to be repaired, and of course, when they are to be cleaned. So that's been a wonderful addition to the department. And of course, you just heard in our points of pride, the elementary musical, since the board goal of this, you know, focus for a more vibrant music and arts program, one thing that our current director for the middle high school musical came to me and said, what about, have you ever thought about an elementary musical? And we had, so I had not, it wasn't on my radar at all. She pitched the idea, and the first musical that we did was How to Eat Like a Child. Just like this year, very, very well-attended. We had probably about 60 students in that show. And then this year, Finding Nemo Jr. was our most recent performance, and we look forward to carrying on this tradition every year. I'm also looking to have the posters framed just like we do in this room. So that's in the works, and we're going to find a spot in the school to display those. So I look forward to that. We have quite a few students. We've kept it to grades three, four, and five due to supervision, maturity level, remembering their lines, and even stretching it to third grade has been quite a feat. But I really am impressed with just the students this year and how they really took their roles seriously. And students that you would never have, you know, pegged to be onstage and have this type of bravery, because it really is that, really shined this year. So it was neat to see. And we also have some students that found themselves gravitating to more backstage crew, and they got experience doing that as well. And another thing, too, with Mr. Bowman being new to us, and also Mr. Youngs fairly new, we've collaborated in an idea to definitely start thinking about how we can, I don't know what you would call that, up our chorus skills, our vocal skills, but also to be working alongside of our middle high school chorus. And like a big brother, big sister type of program, where we could have them collaborate and learn from each other. So you're going to see the elementary chorus being more of that, a true chorus. Whereas before, I would say our chorus was more performance-based and did a lot of skits and transitions, this time you're going to see, you know, a really structured chorus. I'm excited to see how this pans out, and also the collaboration with our middle high school choir. So you'll see that in future plans. And then to speak a little bit about the art program as well, we, thank you to Mrs. Boos last year and Mrs. McGinnis, we looked throughout the school, and we noticed that there were a lot of paintings that were filled in our school. Artwork from decades ago that although brightened up the elementary school, were very dated and needed to find their rightful owners back again. So Mrs. Boos used her investigation skills, hunted down some of our alumni, and we opened up a pickup time for alumni to come in. Actually, at this time last year, as people were visiting home and visiting family, to come pick up their artwork. So they all got returned, and we look forward to creating a new art gallery space that is more interactive and interchangeable throughout the year. So as soon as Mrs. Cassidy comes back from leave, we'll be working on that together. And then I'll pass it around to the middle high school, and then we'll take questions after.
Sure. Yeah, they can do it. Bottom. So I probably, as usual, inundated you a little bit with maybe too much information, but in the spirit of full transparency, I think a lot of what you're going to see coming out of the middle high school is just us doing our due diligence at capturing student voice. So there were three surveys that were conducted last year. We surveyed current middle school musicians, and you'll see there 168 kids responded to that survey, which is beautiful survey results. Our current high school musicians, whether they were in band or chorus, pulling their teeth to get some surveys out of them as well. And then we did a nice group of former high school musicians. So kids at one point were involved in our programs and aren't anymore. Who are you and what can you tell us about our program and what we could have done to get you to stay? So definitely, those three surveys gave us a great sort of variety of, let's call it, feedback to be able to do some program development, which you'll see here. So I love the labor of this, but just in general, one of the things you're going to learn, regardless if we're talking about current middle school students, student musicians, or current high school student musicians, the one thing they always ask for is, why can't we just, like, choose our own music? Right? You'll see in the comments, if you read through them, things like, well, can't we, we want to do, like, pop songs. Our vocal music teachers are actually teaching very strategic curriculum. And so sometimes I think that gets lost on kids, right? The same way that you wouldn't walk into your AP Economics class and say, we want to choose the book that we're going to study, right? So music is the way that the curriculum is delivered, but there are ways that you can help kids get involved in music selection. So definitely something that we continue to work on. So what are our kids basically saying to us? Our current middle school kids, in the survey, we asked them, what electives would you be interested in? So it's really important that we survey around electives at the middle school, because it takes us a little while to build electives and then add them into that high school course syllabus. What's really cool here is that you're going to see that our kids were asking us for music theater, which we already offer in our course guide, music history, music theory, which we currently offer in our course guide, and their music appreciation was the other top one there. When we asked about extracurriculars, they basically got to brainstorm. So we didn't say, here are things to choose from. They were just able to say, here are things we would like to do. So thinking outside of just what we currently offer, what would get you more involved. So everything from, gosh, you know, kids brainstorming back that they liked the recorder, marching band shows up in there a little bit. That is, that is something that Superintendent Malasani has been talking to Leroy Central School District about. We're sharing lots of things, and they do have a wonderful marching band, and it would be great to give our kids that kind of opportunity to be able to participate, both marching band and color guard. So more to come on that as a share in the additions that we're doing there. A lot of kids asked about piano lessons, and so I'm going to put a pin in that, because we're, we're going to talk about a new elective that we're offering at the high school, and I'll circle back to what that might look like. When we asked the kids what kind of performances beyond the performances that we do they would be interested in, look at that pep band. 18%, 31 kids across the middle school survey, and you're going to see that again in the high school survey results. So just thinking about program development, like pep band might actually be something that our kids would be interested in. Maybe not doing it at every single home basketball game, but maybe building something in a few times across the season, just to get kids coming out to sports that maybe weren't coming before. Pep bands are a fantastic thing for our kids to get involved in at the collegiate level as well. We do have one of our grads from last year currently participating in her college pep band while she is studying, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from her. I look forward to her visiting our senior class at our Welcome Home event and sharing a little bit of that. What kind of performances continued? Again, there's that piano, lots of interest in the piano. So how, how can we build that in? Community performances, they recommend maybe we perform at some churches. If you guys go back to last spring, and you'll see that last spring, we actually did do a performance for the first time outside of our walls and in a church. We'll talk about that a little bit. And of course, the kids are always asking for musicals and plays. Our current high school musicians, some of the same things, but for them, why? Why did you stay in band and chorus? Help us understand. And it just overwhelmingly comes back the atmosphere and the passion inside the classroom. Even when they start recommending, making recommendations to us about things that we could do differently, they would love to see our band and chorus be larger, but they want it to be larger with kids just as passionate about playing and singing as they are. So that concept of grow our program, but not just in numbers and the realness of what it's like to be in here, I think, was an overarching part of their communication with us. Again, with electives, music theory, music theater, music history, we do offer theory and theater right now. One, we'll talk about courses. I'll try to stay on track here. Former high school musicians, tell us a little bit about why you're not with us anymore. And really, you do start to see that the course catalog opens up at the high school, and kids begin to choose courses that they feel are important to them. If they're taking really heavy loads, not being in both band and chorus, being in just one or the other does open up for them in their schedule. The opportunity to have a study hall, so you see that study hall actually starts to prioritize itself in some of their feedback. Band lessons is something that we also have talked about programmatically when kids are taking some of these upper-level courses to stay actively involved in band. If you have to come out of band or for band lessons and it's out of your calculus class, you're less likely to do that. So how do we help kids find that sweet spot of, I need a band lesson, but I can't have it come out of that course. I could come out of this one or this one or that one. But that, that's definitely a struggle for us programmatically that we need to keep looking at. Our kids did say, if we could take it as an independent study, we might. Like, 48% of them said maybe. We have in the past offered chorus as an independent study. Typically, though, we've only allowed it in one semester. So if you participate in the fall, you can be independent in the spring. If you're registered to be in chorus in the spring, we usually allow you to participate independent in the fall. It does require a lot of making sure you know the music, and then the kids are required before showtime to get in for full practices so that their voices get enmeshed within the chorus. But that was an interesting statistic, like, how might we restructure ourselves to create more independent study opportunities in our program? Because certainly the kids said, ooh, maybe. 20% said yes, that's worth looking at. Again, why would, what caused you to leave? Different music, right? They really do love more current music, and we don't really sing a lot of current pieces. Sometimes you'll find a current piece in there. Again, that's programmatic and something that the teachers can continue to work on. I've actually heard this one, recognition and achievements, since I got here. There are some things, things that you're starting to notice within our program. Across our band and chorus, we are now doing senior posters, so we're recognizing the kids in the auditorium. We've always done, like, an end of year in the spring where we've recognized our seniors. We've begun for the last two years adding recognition and achievements in our award ceremony at the high school level. So just like kids get pins for athletics, they're now getting letters and pins for music, and that's been very important to our musicians. They want people to know that they're here and that they're, the amount that they juggle is equivalent, really, to our athletics, especially when you start talking about their musical participation. Since the survey, we have jumped on a couple of new courses real fast. So General Music Six, actually, we launched General Music Six before the survey was complete. So our sixth grade students, we did have room in their schedule to build something. This general music class, we probably spent about $4,000 on equipment for the class. There's all kinds of new toys in this room. So even though the kids are learning music theory and music appreciation, they're definitely doing it through play. So the structure of this class, when you walk in here, they're using their voices and they're using musical instruments. And definitely, Mr. Youngs is teaching them a lot about music appreciation and the fundamentals of understanding music, including being able to read it, but he's doing it in this play-like atmosphere, which has been a fantastic add. This room is loud during general music. There's four, five, six different instruments all playing at the same time while the kids are singing. It's actually very therapeutic. So if you're ever lonely and you need that, general music is the place for you. Across the high school, a new course that we are going to launch is a course called Piano Ukulele. Please know that it's not piano lessons, but we are going to use the pianos that we purchased and the ukuleles that we've purchased to help kids really understand music theory and music history. So some of these bigger, broader concepts are now going to be embedded in the same sort of concept of play. So when kids tell you it's about the piano, this elective might actually draw them in, though it is not going to be piano lessons. They are going to be learning fundamentals of the piano in order to learn fundamentals of music history and music theory, things that are maybe a little too dense for most students. If you're going to graduate and go off to study music, you probably want that music theory class. But if that's not what you're thinking, this elective would give them a great opportunity to still get some of the basics of that, but do it through play. This course will launch next year for the first time. Change is afoot, ladies and gentlemen. So as you know, whenever you're talking about program development, we've done a lot of shifting from being a middle school and a high school to being a middle, high school. And you're going to start now feeling that across our music program, not just because we have made that merge ourselves, but because programmatically, the music department is talking about if we continue to do it the way we're doing it, we leave big gaps in when kids can participate. So the elementary school now has a musical. If we don't then include the sixth through 12 in our musical, they don't get a shot at a musical again until ninth grade. We do a play at the middle level. We don't do a play again until senior year called the senior play. This year, we opened the senior play up to the juniors. The program here believes wholeheartedly that we actually should open the play nine through 12. And even if we maintain a structure where the senior class has benefited from that as part of a fundraiser, that we not limit access to that particular play, because same thing, the kids that really love a play might not see themselves in a musical. The kids that love a musical might not see themselves in a play. So how can we, through our program design, say, let's start to open these things up? We have them. We have them, they're budgeted for. Our numbers are down in terms of participation. Let's start to choose plays and musicals that actually engage our kids straight across the board. The kids did say some of what they would like is some off-site pieces. This is actually, this top picture is our very first cabaret. The students actually picked their own songs, so back to I Want Choice. They chose their own song that they were going to sing at the cabaret. They were members of the choir. They would come in and meet with Mr. Youngs to practice their song individually, and then we actually met up at the stone church, and the kids performed. Their parents were in the audience, the place was pretty packed for our first one, and there was a lot of talent on display. So I imagine that will be something that Mr. Youngs will be excited to do again this year. We have also changed some of our rules around making band and chorus mandatory in grades seven and eight. We were worried about that. We do believe, at least we thought, that one of the reasons why our numbers were high is because we require kids in the middle school to be in either band or chorus. They tend to then choose chorus if they don't want to continue playing an instrument. So our seventh and eighth grade chorus has remained really healthy in terms of its numbers. Last year, mid-year, we made the switch and allowed kids to take a general music class. So we've now opened General Music Seven, and it is taught by Mr. Trost while Mr. Youngs is teaching chorus, and the opposite occurs if we need it, where Mr. Youngs can teach the class while Mr. Trost is teaching band. So we've created for ourselves some flexibility there. I am pleased to tell you that we had that initial, you can drop this if you want, you have to pick up a general music class to get your music credit, but you no longer have to be in chorus. We probably had seven or eight kids that really flooded back out. They're all back in chorus. So our numbers this year are nice and strong, and it feels good to know that the kids that are in your program are there by choice, and that really has eliminated some of the behavioral concerns that we are having. I can go back to the beginning of my time here, and Mr. Walker would say, you know, the, the kids don't get to know who I am until they hit ninth grade, because most of what they see is a lot of my classroom management. And I'm good at it, and I'm going to maintain order, and we're going to, we're going to meet my objective for the day, but then the kids come into ninth grade chorus and they actually get to meet the musician and me. This has been a nice change for us, because I do think right at the middle level, the kids are meeting the musician and Mr. Youngs. We launched a new art course. It's been a couple of years now. We actually put brand-new kilns in both the art rooms at the elementary school and the middle high school. We had to put our ceramics pieces first in our studio art class to give them the basics of ceramics. This is the first year that we have, I'm looking over here, these guys are filthy all day long because that ceramics class happens in the morning, and they're covered in dirt and dust, or clay, I should say, clay and dust, rummage. This class is a lot of fun. They're, they're enjoying the space, the things that they're creating. We did not have three-dimensional art, and we offer that AP course. We really needed to get the three-dimensional art in there. This has been a fantastic add for us. We opened it last year in our course catalog. We had so many selections of ceramics that we're actually running it in the fall and in the spring. But I had told Mrs. McCartell, regardless how much the children love it, we may only offer it in one semester, and then we must get it to every other year. This is very expensive. I didn't know. I keep emailing Mr. Nardone, saying, oh my gosh, she needs more money. Ceramics has been expensive. So because it's not something that we've offered, it's not just the clay, it's all the things, it's everything you could think of, from the tools and the wheels and the, the pieces of, that will be reusable, you know, when she goes to teach it again, but we're, we are definitely spending some money in this course. It's worth it, though, right? Yeah. 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 We did something new last year during the art show. Did you guys notice this?
I feel like it was selfishly for us.
It was. It really was. We stole this. We're pretty creative, but we, this, we actually stole this from another district. So basically, every administrator in the district had a ribbon. And we all gave a ribbon to a piece of artwork that moved us. So the artwork, the room was packed full and we just went in and chose, which was awesome. The kids knew we were doing it and then we celebrated them, as you can see. Only to grow from here. Only to grow from here. There are pieces of art that we selected or hanging in our offices. We'll give them back.
We will. Yeah. As I imagine, as we replace.
Twenty years.
We are not going to collect them like we did at the elementary.
Every art show, we'll get, we'll give them something back and take something new.
It was really fun because for us, we go to the art show and we're looking around and we're seeing families. And we want to spend time looking at the art and then making sure that we recognize kids for all their great work. And I did pick an elementary student, but that doesn't mean I can only pick an elementary student. So it's fair game for everybody. And it was really fun. And it was fun for us as a team, too, to, you know, select something together and see what we all liked, too, what spoke to us, so.
We thought, we thought over a couple.
We did.
We'll let it go.
We did. So I look forward to doing that again this year.
All right.
I think that's it. So if you have questions, feel free.
You're welcome. Any questions from the board?
I have one question.
Sure.
That you're no doubt aware of is, in our family, my grandson wasn't able to have band this semester because of health or something like that. Anyhow, you know, so, so much for practicing your trumpet, you know, for the semester. He'll be back in it next month, you know. And one less concert for me to go to. But, yeah.
It is true. It's probably not just health that got in the way of his schedule. Like, there was probably something else that he was hoping to take that, given the size of our school, we only offer in one block in one semester. So that's probably likely. I offer health in a few blocks. So it's probably not health that tripped him up. But we do have some one-offs. Like, I just know his schedule. So like, I'm trying to, he's in a class that I'm only offering in this semester in a particular block. So it sort of drives the rest of his schedule. You'll find that that's very true, unfortunately, of our schedule constraint. But we do try when we're building the master schedule. We actually build the master schedule by students, starting with the seniors and then working our way down. So we try to make sure that we don't create our own scheduling issues. But it does happen when we get some of these one-off courses, for sure.
I just thought it.
Yeah. We know.
And I just have a question about the general music. So you said in sixth grade, they're all getting general music. And then in seventh grade, they get the choice between chorus, band, chorus and band, or general music.
Correct.
Now, in eighth grade, they obviously still can do chorus or band. Are they getting general music then, or they're just done with?
They're just done. Yeah, they're just done with music.
So it's just a requirement to have music for?
We offer more music than what we need to. For us, that sixth grade general music course, because it's both the vocals and the instrumental, it's our way of saying, you might have come to this building and not been in chorus and band, but give us a chance. Right? So we still want to, we want to try to help you fall in love with this in a different way. So our whole approach with our sixth grade general music is to play around enough that they might say, maybe I will try band again.
Now, is there an eighth grade general music?
There's not.
Okay. Because I didn't know if any kids would be interested in.
So the requirement for not to sing is twenty weeks. From grade six to eight. So if you're in band or chorus, you've met that tenfold, right? Especially over a three-year period. If you're not in band or chorus, you get your music over sixth and seventh grade to twenty weeks. It's twenty weeks.
Yes. We just, we didn't offer general music to some of the eighth graders, is really what happened. So you, because we didn't, you, you had to take band or chorus. So now we've added a general music class that allows them to select that. We're giving too much. Could we not do the seventh grade one? Maybe put a pin in that. Right? Right now, our program is staying very healthy and it's very strong. There is this thing that happens during middle school where if kids can peel off of a lot of things, they will. But they don't know what they love yet, right? So trying to make sure that they hold out until they're sure it's something that they love or don't love versus my buddy doesn't like it or my friends aren't in that, right? Just enough that they say, oh, I, this is my decision. And definitely, that's where we're holding out with our music program.
Couple of things for me. I appreciate the work you've done on this. I mean, it's been like a, what, a one and a half year turnaround on a lot of this stuff. I'm encouraged by the teachers that are in place right now. I think they're doing a great job connecting with the kids. I think that the feeder program from the elementary building is much stronger for the kids coming up into middle school, especially with the elementary musical. There's that orientation and it's just good things. So for pep band in college, the kids want more fun. Pep band is fun. You know, you take care of your regular band and learn how to play.
Yeah.
And then you go to the games and have a great time. So, yeah, thank you. On the right track.
One thing that Mr. Trost said last night at the concert, if you were there, is the very last song that the kids did, he said, they're constantly bugging me. I just want to play the drums. Can I please play the drums? And so he did one song where everybody played some form of percussion. It was the best song of the night, right? You could feel it. It was like the energy just changed for them. And I think when kids tell you what they like and then you build for them what they said they like and they want, you get the energy from them. It's fun. Yeah, I look forward to a pep band.
Any other comments, any other things that they should be considering in their plan?
I would just say that as a person who hardly ever took any music and stuff and still don't know the difference between this instrument or that instrument, I think it's wonderful that you're, you're creating that. You know, I don't, somehow I missed the music appreciation because I was busy doing home class.
Fair. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Mr. Rossani?
Yes.
Onto draft budget guidelines.
Yes, so Dr. Chanel and I worked together to provide you some draft guidelines that I can share with you maybe in the last two or three weeks. The structure's a little bit different. So we set it up where the board will do X, Y, and Z. The administration will do X, Y, and Z. And then the district shall or district will. So we have thirteen different guidelines that we put together for the board consideration. To be frank with you, come first meeting in February, you're already developing the budget. I can share with you, Jeremy and I and Dr. Chanel have been working on this since September in terms of putting things together and putting structures in place so that when you get to February, I think you really have, I think it's four total meetings before you adopt. So I've asked for feedback throughout. There hasn't been any. Now that you have the opportunity to look at this, is there any other changes that you would like to see? Or things that you want us to reconsider? This is draft, so we don't actually adopt this until January. So if you have any feedback, I'd like to, I'd like to share that now.
I do not have any feedback. It's anyone else.
We do not look through the time.
And it doesn't stop you guys from emailing me. We have another month before you adopt. And I'll share it out with the board, so it's not a surprise.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we're going to move on to compacting committee reports. So compact reports, could we have that from our respective?
Yeah, we'll share with the principal and the board member, yes.
Well, last time Peggy did a beautiful job. And we haven't met since, so. But I will kind of reintroduce our three goals and then where we're at and where we're going to start again come the new year. So I do have to say, this is a very well-attended committee. I've been part of PTO slash compacts since really being here and kind of following Dave around and seeing what this committee was all about. We have a very healthy committee. I'd like to say it's because of the compact goals, but really, it's also because it's joint with PTO. And the mission for both of those committees is really to do right by kids and to bring great events and just that spark of an elementary school. This is where all of those ideas start to, you know, come to life. And it's all parents. We have teacher representatives. And of course, myself, Mr. Green, and our PTO president is also a teacher in our building. So it really is an all-in approach. We came up with three goals. And I'll let you know where we're at with all three of them at this point. So the first one is to expand some of our volunteer opportunities, to enrich the experiences and to really think about how we can more involve the community more. We have a great parent base of volunteers. So if you are linked up to your teacher and you ask your teacher, hey, I want to come in and help with this, this and that, very much a yes. We have a great process for that. So that part is very much live and well. But we were really thinking about ways to involve the community aside from just our typical career day. So we are brainstorming ideas, how to welcome community in while also vetting the idea and finding the appropriate grade level where their area of expertise would fit in. So that's what we're talking about. We created a spreadsheet for our volunteers to sign up. The next step is where does that go and how do we get community involvement? But right now, our process is healthy and we do have a lot of volunteers coming in every single day. So we spent, at our last meeting, talking about those opportunities and what already exists so that we could see what, what more needs to happen. Then, the second goal is considering hosting a curriculum night specifically focused on maybe IXL, our new benchmarking tool. Now that Lindsay is on board, we've talked about, you know, working in collaboration with Lindsay to see what would parents want. And I'm going to transition to our third goal really quickly because it ties into this one. But we wanted to provide at least three opportunities for parents to give us feedback on how their experience is throughout the year. And one of the questions, the very last question that we asked was, would you come to a parent night? A curriculum night? And half of the responses said maybe, depending on what the topic is. Which leads me to believe that it's not going to be the most well-attended, but we really need to put like a commercial out or something. It is something. We need to really spice it up a little. Yes, food, all of it. So the, the survey did go out. We reviewed the survey at our last meeting. It was very favorable to the elementary about communication and, you know, experience in the building with their classroom teacher. And just as a whole, it really gave you all the feels and, and parents felt heard and the direction is all going in the right way. So that was really encouraging. But now, come January, we're going to start focusing on what that curriculum night would be. And a couple of our parents said, Michelle, does it even have to be a curriculum night? What if we put out videos? So I'm struggling with, you know, teaching my kid how to read. Like, what are the fundamentals? Can we have a couple of quick how-to videos? Maybe it would be nice to even have our teachers do it, a little personal touch. So we might even come up with a video series of how-to. But something like that, our parents were definitely vocal in saying, I don't know if I want to come out to an event. We go to a lot of events. We also talked about that, too, that we put on a lot of events here in Calidonia and it's wonderful. So to add one more thing, it really has to be thoughtful and what is it that we want to launch? So we're going to focus our energy in January on that and see where it leads. Maybe its own little YouTube channel. I don't know. We'll see who's willing. Yes, Peggy, please add.
I, I was reflecting over that compact meeting. And I just happened to remember one mom saying something about not knowing how to help their mom, their kid with reading and blending. And I'm like, what's your problem? And then I realized. I realized that some of these.
Those two meetings are super fun.
No, no, no. It's just that, that, you know, I'm old school. I'm, I know phonics. I know how to blend. I do, you know, sound it out, kid, you know? And, and if the parents now were not taught that way and now you're starting to teach that way, they's like, you know, how is that? You should go out and get all the old ladies.
You could be the head of our YouTube channel.
Yeah. A little, little, you know, tutoring the moms, teach the parents how to help their kids. Because if they didn't learn how to read that way.
And finding out the modality in which people want to be communicated with, I think, has been our biggest thing. So will families come out for an event? It might be the ones that don't always need to come either. So it's a, how do we get everyone involved and access to everyone regardless of what time of day it is? So I think it'll be fun to brainstorm and to come up with a couple of ideas that's sustainable, of course, too. Because I don't want it to just die in the wind. Anything else, Mike, Peggy, if you want to add that I maybe missed?
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Dietrich, you're up.
Oh, I, Mrs. McNair and I talked already.
At the middle high school compact committee, this year, we are focused on building a course guide for the middle school. Definitely something that we have for the high school. I got done with our first meeting and I called superintendent Mom Sani and I was like, hey. And he goes, we have one of those. In fact, when he was middle school principal, we did and I found them. So we've looked at some samples now collectively over how other schools are sharing out what's offered in middle school. And as a committee, we've chosen sort of the format that we like and the kind of information that we like. And the teachers actually just put information in for a first draft. So the compact committee will see that when we meet again after the holidays, we get back in January, a first draft for them to be able to give feedback and revision. So that's our build. I guess what I would just say is I'm always grateful for that group because as much as I'm ingrained in a course guide across the nine twelve and would never think about not having one and updating it every single year. When I took over the middle school, it's just a practice we've gotten out of the habit of. I hadn't even given it a thought. So what I love most about the compact committee is that as parents and community members, you're just living with a different point of view than what we are. And so when you come in and share that with us, it opens our eyes back up to things we probably should have been thinking about. So I'm always very grateful for the feedback.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business. There is no old business, so we're moving on to new business. Number one, approval of tax collectors report. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the 2024, 2025 tax collectors report. Motion, please.
I just couldn't throw out there, would you like Jeremy to speak to it or is that self-explanatory? Whatever. He's prepared to say if he was. Should you need that? Or is it?
Does he have any other discussion? No?
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion, Jeremy?
Well, Michael.
Pretty much it's the same as the prior year, so I included last year as well. So you can see last year it was 241,000 that was sent back to the counties. This year, it's 239. So we're at the same, same dollar amount, which is great. Thank you to the community for paying. Interest rates are high still, over four percent, so we're able to take that money and invest it. And remember that rest of the money comes in March, once the counties are made whole. Because that money is tacked back onto county taxes that go out in January. Once a county receives that, they'll make us whole in March. So don't worry, we're going to get all our tax money. It's just going to take a little bit longer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Thank you. Flex plan amendment. Mr. Rossani, is there anything you want to say before?
Thank you, Mrs. McNair. Really, this is amendments because the IRS has changed their agreements, in this case, the rate. It's got increased from previous year. This is to be quite as high as the IRS.
Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, amend the district's flexible benefit plan as attached. Can I have a motion, please? A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That is carried. Approval of amended substitute rates. Mr. Rossani.
So the difference here is that come January, they changed the minimum wage requirements. So we are modifying our rates that we approved in June, excuse me, July, to reflect and make sure we comply with the law as well.
Thank you. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the update the following substitute rates effective January 1, 2025 for the remainder of the 2024, 25 school year as attached. Have a motion, please. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Next on our agenda is executive session. We will continue to, the board will continue to invite Dr. Chanel into executive session as she transitions into being our next superintendent of schools. Resolved at the Board of Education adjourn to executive session at 6:50. Resolved at the Board of Education adjourn to executive session at 6:50 to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and discussion regarding pending litigation with the CMTA. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That is carried. We're going to executive session. Welcome back from executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education, return to regular session at 7:51 PM. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That is carried. We're going to move to personnel. Personnel one through 10. Can I have a motion, please?